Motion made.
Second.
Second by Brad, very good. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next, we move to the special meeting that we had on August 20, August 11th, excuse me. And we'll be short meeting on approving the Cedar Edge Part Two final plan. Any questions, comments, changes to that? Hearing none, have a motion for approval in those minutes.
Motion.
Very good, thanks. And Brad seconded. Okay, very good. All those in favor, aye.
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 I say major item on the agenda is public hearings for two different extraterritorial developments. This is the sort of thing where a city has jurisdiction over developments within two miles of that city. And so we have one by Bruce Barnhardt, Book of the Ridge it's called. And Bruce, if you want to come share with us what-
I have my engineer Tom Anthony from Shoemaker and Holland. And if he knows the case of questions you might have, he will present for us.
Good evening Commissioners and Dave and Mike, fellow consultants that I've worked with before. I'm Tom Anthony from Shoemaker Engineering and I've been working with Bruce on this for a good couple of years, getting this all already up to the point where we can make our submittals all the way through. As you've probably seen or already gone through the process of most of this, it's a county subdivision, but we're required by state code and city code to go through at a minimum a waiver request or a review request with the cities that have that two mile jurisdiction allowed them by the code and/or with 28E agreements with the county. And we realize that West Branch doesn't have a 28E agreement, but nonetheless, you still have the state code which allows you to do a review. Our initial request, of course, is for a waiver of that review rather than going through the whole process. So we haven't received an official response that says, yes, we're going to waive it or yes, we're going to review it. I can save us a lot of time tonight if we were going to just waive the review of it and we'd be done. But I want to at least ask the Commissioners if you're going to go that process or you want me to make the full presentation.
Well personally, I'm in favor of the presentation. I would like to know more about the development, how it fits with the potential city expansion and the details that you have.
Then I'll proceed. Like I said, we've been working a long time on this. And Bruce's initial concept, which we've kept, is to put some development lots along Charles Avenue. And but we have a lot of criteria to have to deal with there. In the county review process, they want, and we provided larger lots than would be normal for town lots. The reason there being, they have to have a septic system. And the county review process and desire is to make that a maximum process, a maximum allowable use. So Phil LaRue wanted us to show on our plat where our housing location would be and where our primary septic system would be and a secondary second, secondary location, just in case your primary one would fail. And you can do that with larger lots, with small lots obviously you couldn't. So we're in a position here where the three acre lots are manageable in that respect, trying to provide that maximum ability for home sites and septic systems. Part of that also relates to grading, it relates to floodplain. There's a lot of other items here that come into play. And if you notice this plat, which is the preliminary one, has two particular sheets. What you see on your submittal should be two separate plats. It's one plat, actually one submittal, but there's two drawings. And if they're large enough that you can see it then-
Sorry, I think you only provided the one-
That's right.
The one that had the lot number lots.
You didn't get both of them?
I did, but I didn't include it in the packet. I didn't know how much to tell you.
Okay. Well, that second one's pretty important because that has a lot of detail on it that's not shown on- if you're looking at sheet one of two, that's the one you have, that basically looks more like a final plat because it's just lot numbers, easements, dimensions, and things like that. There's not, that's basically what the final plat is going to look like without a whole lot of other information on it. Sheet two, which is going to be hard to explain if you don't have it in front of you, is, shows all the contours, all the elevations, it shows the houses, it shows the septics, it shows the wells, it shows the driveways, shows the contours, the floodplain. All that information is on the other sheet. So do you have a possibility you can make some-
This-
Are you wanting to see the full thing?
No, I'll tell you, this is a preliminary presentation. So I certainly think we need it for the next one that comes along, but I don't know. Ryan, you're really good at looking at those elements.
Yeah, I guess in general, is your intent to keep the land shape generally the same? You'll have probably walkout lots and there's probably some floodplain down by the creek.
Okay, yeah, I can probably give you a visual on it even though you may not have the picture there. If you recognize Charles Avenue from driving out there, the county road itself, the concrete one going west to east has a valley in it with the big culvert underneath that. And then Charles Avenue runs south from the county road. And it also has a valley going down the bottom and then comes back up at the south end. So we took advantage of that topography because obviously if you're facing Charles Avenue with the front of your house and the lots slope away to the back, then you were going to have the lockout opportunity on all the lots. And there's only one extra lot on the county road and that's on the other, on the east side of the creek. So, and that's a larger lot anyway that backs up to the agricultural area. So that fits in to the topography as far as just a regular lot layout like you see on your sheet right now, sheet one. What's added to sheet one is the big creek that's in the back. And I'm going to at least show you a picture sort of like that, okay? Kind of like, see what's going on. The Charles Avenue is right here, the county road is across the top, just like you have on your picture. All the lot layouts are the same as the other sheet. But what you'll see on here is this heavy area that's got a darker line on it and the creek is running down kind of the middle of that. And that creek has a floodplain established on it by FEMA. It's called Zone A because it's not studied and doesn't have real flood elevations to it on the FEMA map. So part of fixing that process, so we can design around it, is we had the Department of Natural Resources give us the floodplain elevations for that entire strip all the way through here. Starting at the county road, Big Culvert, and ending at the Big Culvert under Interstate 80. So they gave us a top of water profile, basically, of what the 100 year storm would be at from one culvert to the next. And believe it or not, that's seven feet a drop from one to the other. So that's a pretty good slope considering most creeks don't have that kind of a slope. So as that water expands out during the floodplain, that's what the dark line is.
We'll now have sheet two.
Now you got it. Thank you. Now it'll be much easier. You'll, if you study that for just a minute, you'll see we still have the same eight lots in a row. And each lot has its house designated by the shadowed rectangle. Each lot has two other boxes in there that are the primary and secondary septic. Okay? That heavy dark line that I was explaining verbally is the 100 year floodplain as it passes from the county road down to interstate. It's that wide based on the Department of Natural Resources numbers that they gave us. So you'll see in the middle of each lot along that black line, there's kind of a big black dot at an angle point. Those are the points that we set for the elevation of the floodplain inside that lot. So we cannot encroach into the floodplain with any building, grading, or anything east of that line toward the creek. And we don't want to, anyway. We want to keep all the building sites and septic sites outside of that. So you can see based on that being at the right scale, that's what we intend to do. On the final plat, which will be next, we're going to take that elevation that's written on each of those lots at that big dot. That's going to be on the final plat, so the homeowner knows he cannot build anything below that level. And it has to be certified by a surveyor to satisfy the county's requirement on low opening for the buildings and septic fields have to be outside of that. We've got enough room that it can happen. So we're not bunching these things together such that it's going to be cumbersome. You got any other questions about the septic part? I can-
I have a question. Leslie, are you able to email that second sheet to those of us that are on Zoom? By any chance, I know it looks like a giant piece of paper, but-
Yeah.
We can't see what you're talking about on our, thank you.
About the loan. Any other questions that relate to the floodplain?
Oh no, not to the floodplain, I guess. Generally, I was going to move on to, are these intended to be like residential or one lots or what type?
Yes, right, single family, residential. What you probably haven't seen is the multitude, even though we submitted them, the lawyers have already prepared all the documents, the covenants, the subdivisions agreements with the county. All the legal papers are ready and we presented those. So if someone had a question and wanted to review them, they could. Obviously, that's part of the final plat. But if people get a chance to look at it before that occurs, they're not, you know, deluged with data that they can't understand or can't have time to get their questions worked up.
Well, I was surprised by the size of the lot, but you've answered that in terms of the requirements for septic.
Right, they're not a town lot for sure.
No.
They are a lot that's-
One of the aspects of the Cedar County Plan is to preserve as much farmland as possible. And, you know, Jason is obviously farmland. One would think that you'd have one acre lots perhaps or something similar rather than three. But no, no, I understand a bit better. I understand how much of this is unusable.
I would just like to point out, that is identified in the Cedar County's comprehensive plan as, part of it as a place for residential.
As a potential growth area, yes.
That's because of its proximity, it's proximity to West Branch. It's, I know, your comprehensive plan kind of shows it that way. If you had an inclination to move east with annexation, but most of your development and emphasis right now is on the west side of town. With school and all the development out there, which I've been a part of too, has been concentrated over there with very little emphasis on taking facilities or subdivisions to the east.
I think of this time, as far as I can tell, no inclination to annex in that direction.
Yeah.
You'd have to be voluntary. You'd have to ask for it.
Pretty much. There's some other things I would like to touch on there on the bullet points. The driveways, instead of having eight lots with eight driveways, we've combined each, every other lot with a combined driveway for two lots. We only have four driveways for eight lots along that stretch of Charles. The county engineer wants that for sure. It cuts down on access points and possibility that, you know, you get more traffic, just more driveways, culverts, everything that you have to do.
And it's more efficient too.
Yeah. So the county allowed us to put in a 32 foot driveway to allow someone's parking in the driveway and someone still wants to come in. You've got, you know, got plenty of room for ingress and egress without having a crash situation or waiting for someone to come and go. So also with that, that turns out to be a good starting place to figure out how to deal with your wells and the infrastructure related to that. Rather than have a single well for every lot, which a lot of people don't like to do, we combined a well up at the first driveway at the top. If you remember, this is a valley, so it's down in the middle where the low point is. We have a well at the top of this hill, that lot between lots one and two. And we have a well at the top of the next hill at seven and eight. So it's downhill from both wells to get to four lots each. So we've got, you know, pressure to go downhill both ways. And we've already got the well guy lined up to agree. People have given a solid thought on that. And we're pretty confident we can have a good system for lots with four on each well. Lot nine being far enough away from all the rest, he's going to have to have his own well across the creek. That would make not very good sense to punch a well down under the creek service line up to that point. So another point that's important is grading. We're not going to do any grading other than driveways and the front yards up to where the houses are going to be. We shaped that up, it's more like landscaping and grading. And we're not going to, can't grade in the backyards because that's where the septics are. They have to remain in natural, natural ground. And at best, someone's going to be cutting out a basement and shaping up their yard. So that's basically the, the cut and fills are so minimal just to, you know, bring up the front yard up to grade, basically, and smooth it out.
They'll still have to get a- People are going to put in lawns.
Right, yeah. We still specify that each lot get their swift permit for grading and everything. So that's important that they all take care of that. And you're lucky you've got a guy like Bruce that can do all this stuff anyway in his sleep. So having him do that on the subdivisions is a blessing for engineering.
So just to clarify real quick, you have two shared wells with these nine lots, is that right?
Two shared wells for eight lots.
For eight lots, so what are we doing, okay?
Lot nine on the other side of the creek will have its own well.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
That's pretty much the bullet points unless we can discuss something else.
I know this is probably closer to your final lot type of questions, but I just wondered if the county is going to require any type of street improvements for that work?
That, that's, that is something that's important. The county engineer has been very cooperative with us on the whole thing. He wrote the spec for us on what we have to do. We didn't really have much choice on making a presentation of what we would rather do. He said, you're going to do this or you're not going to have a subdivision. And so they have an agreement that's already written and there should have been in your package, that agreement with the county. There's a whole subdividers agreement, which for sure you'll see on the final plat version. But in the bullet points of that are that Bruce is going to surface it with more gravel, chip and seal it, and do the ditch work and the culvert work and get everything ready right away before any lots are sold. So that part will be done, the road will be, will be basically completed, ready to open it for, you know, house building. Before, we won't have people running in and out of there when the road is, is not improved to, you know, mess it up or make it worse than it. It's not that bad right now because it's such a low traffic. And it looks like it's only one lane.
Yes.
But it, when you get there, it is actually 22 feet wide, which is the minimum road already for the county. It's just that grass is growing up on the shoulders because nobody drives too, you know, too wide on that road. It's everybody just drives it down the middle. So the road itself is there in good shape because it's been low traffic. And so the way the agreement's set up, if, if the road would deteriorate at all during the process of building houses and that, and the county engineer drives out there and says it needs to be done over again or fixed, he has the power to just tell Bruce to fix it. If a person complains to the county about it, who lives out there and says, this road's really kind of getting chopped up right now. The engineer goes out and looks at it and says, yep, he's got the ability, he's got the right to tell Bruce to fix it again. So it's really written for the benefit of the county. And it's their road, so we can't really object to them telling us what to do with it.
That leads to my next question, which is about maintenance. I'm assuming you're saying it's their road, so that would mean the county maintains that it's like-
Right, the county will do the snow plowing. They've agreed to that because they've got all the equipment for it. But the maintenance of it is up to Bruce and the homeowners association. That's part of the bylaws in the covenants and everything that is in writing right now, which you'll probably get to see again at the, at the final plat stage if you want to take your time to read all the legal documents.
Yeah, so once all the lots are sold, the homeowners association will cover the maintenance of their-
Right, straight. It's in, in writing on their, their covenants and homeowners association bill. Of course, Bruce, Bruce is still an owner until he's 51% of the lots are sold. So he's still going to have, you know, an active participation in making sure that everything stays the same. So more than half the lots have to be sold before he's kind of outvoted. And that was another thing, I just want to bring it up. The county made sure there was an agreement, in the agreement, that said the homeowners association could never file a motion or a resolution to disband their responsibility of the road. Which is the first time I've seen that, but the county attorney picked up on that and said, let's do that. Another thing we had to follow that we wouldn't normally deal with.
Anyone have any questions about chip seal as opposed to asphalt, concrete, whatever? No concerns?
I think I'm not surprised that that would be what the county would require. I think that's very similar to what other county subdivisions in the area have had out there. I know if we ever get into the annexation stage on that side, that's a little bit of cost that the city may incur at that time. But we don't want to get in business of forcing developers to spend a bunch of money just because we might annex it, some to make a lot of things not doable, I'm sure, so.
One big advantage of this road is it's a dead end, stops the interstate. There's only going to be, there's one person at the end right now. And then there's that little electric substation. So unless you build another bridge over 80, there will only be nine people, nine families using that road for, along maybe infinity, who knows? But it's always going to be the road it is now. And it will still be improved to a better standard for the eight homes that are going to be on there.
Okay, other comments? Do those power lines present any problems?
No, in fact, it just came out luckily that our driveways, I think with the exception of maybe one pole that would be better moved further away from a driveway, is, it just was luck that we laid out our lots and missed the power poles. We're okay with that, obviously. And there is gas out there too. There's natural gas.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the-
I'll just go on record saying I think it's a good plan. I support it. As far as annexation into the city, I really can't foresee that. In the far future, there's no path to per septic sewer to a lagoon. I don't see that ever happening in a city lagoon. So water distribution, if it ever is annexed and, and the street would probably be, I don't think the city really wants to take on that responsibility for a long, long time.
And probably by that time, you'll have some development on the west side of the road that would make it more feasible to even consider annexation. At this point in time, it's in a mood.
I think it's a good plan.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we thank you very much. And if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to comment, forward to that.
Hey, John?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarifying point because I know we were talking about the differences between courtesy and formal review. And I just wanted to let the board know that the council had decided to not to conduct a formal review, which would trigger us utilizing our city engineer to review plans. And, and that comes with certain expenses and things of that nature. So they just wanted to have a healthy conversation like we had tonight and, and allow the board to ask questions, but we didn't want to really trigger a formal review.
So how would you put that in the form of a resolution? Because we have to have either a waiver or an approval for it to legally pass that review. If you make a motion to waive it, you could still discuss it. But if you make a motion to approve it, you've got to go through the whole process.
Sounds like, it sounds like based on what you just described, that a motion to waive it would be the motion that would go to council.
So the recommendation from commission could be to waive it and then let the council, they still have the final decision whether they want to waive it or not, but-
Council would support what this board recommends, most likely.
Well, coming from Johnson County, I know that's not always possible.
Same thing you're doing tonight.
Okay.
We're all wondering what's going to happen out there and this answers the question.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah, I guess I don't see any concern with waiving the requirement or the formal review. Keep the expenses low for the city as far as not having a city engineer view. I'm sure the county is going to check all the boxes that our city engineer would as well. And with, like Roger said, if it's not going to be annexed for quite some time, you may have a whole different list of things to worry about by then anyway, so.
If you have any experience with Phil LaRue, he checks off hundreds of boxes at the time of everything we go through. So he's very thorough on that.
Well frankly, if I hadn't heard your explanation, I might feel different. But I can go with a waiver as well. So let me entertain a motion from the commission member.
I'll make a motion to waive the requirement for, for more review.
That's the appropriate one, yes. Is there, is there a second? Okay, James seconds. We'll have a, we'll call a vote on this. So Leslie, if you'll do that.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Enskoy?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep up and join up. Good luck. The next item on the agenda is the little, the two proposal. And then would you like to share with us what you have in mind?
Hi, Ben Hemingway, uneducated idiot. I guess it pays a little bit to go second. Not my first go around with John Sky planning and zoning. I always expect it to be painful, as this one is. I did not know I was going to be doing it in duplicate. So usually as a matter of getting these things going before, before the white signs go up or the letters in the mail show up, I call all my friends and neighbors. I call anybody who's going to drive by and I think's going to have a problem with this and I tell them what I'm doing. I think that heads off a lot of problems up front. I know I have a very visceral reaction to the word subdivision. Sorry Bruce, he left. But, but I've seen the white signs go up, you know, makes a visceral reaction out of me. But if somebody's talked to me ahead of time, I know I feel a lot better about that. I did not know I was going to extend all the way to West Branch. So I have some questions. Some of them I've gotten pieced together tonight, whatever, just what I'm doing. just what I'm doing here and why. Um, and, and I guess it's a little bit better framework from the previous presenter, you know, are you waving or are you reviewing or what's going on, you know? And, you know, Johnson County's pumped me off the agenda twice waiting for an answer, which irritates me a little bit. But so I guess, I just, what are we doing here and what am I doing here is my question.
Well, essentially it's splitting a lot, right?
Yes. I would call it a farmstead split.
Yeah, well, probably not a farmstead, but nonetheless.
It's 60 acres with a house on it. We used to call that farmstead splits.
Yeah, you've, you've been in touch with Josh with Johnson County?
Yes.
And you've been put off twice?
Well, they're waiting for an answer. I mean, we would have been on the, the last planning and zoning meeting in, I can't tell you when it was, but we just missed it last week because they were waiting for this. I think we turned in, I asked my guy when we turned it in, Hart Forever is doing it, Scott, and I asked him that the, he turned it in on July 9th, and we missed the September meeting. But that's really not the point, I guess. Um, I'm just curious how this all got triggered and all that good stuff.
Yeah, it's, uh, this is within our two mile jurisdiction. Yes.
Well, so John, this is very similar to the last situation. I got a call from Johnson County telling us about this one. And since we, it was coming in around the same time as the Bonhart situation, we figured we'd do it the same way with the same recommendation, allow the contractors or developers to come forth, let the board ask questions of it in a formal kind of Q and A. But at the end of, of that, do the same thing, make recommendation to waive that, waive it, it'd go to council and it'd be, it'd be accepted in the same way.
Yeah, that Johnson County has been troubled by farmland splits. And I don't know what their feeling would be about this, but from our standpoint, I can't really imagine that this is a matter of it's going to be of any consequence to West Branch. I certainly don't see annexation going in that, that far in that direction.
And we're certainly not looking for that in any way. And also, you know, Johnson County did the villages, and this is inside the village of Oasis.
Now, there are village plans for traditional villages in Johnson County. So, well then, I think I have to entertain a motion similar to the last. Brad, Bradso moves that we waive our interest in this particular, this particular project. In Ryan's seconds, okay, we can have a roll call note again.
Power?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Enscoy?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben.
Oh, sorry. Um, you know, just, you know, we're not building any houses. We're just, actually, I own this property 50/50 with my sister. She's not interested in the house anymore. She wanted to sell me her half of the house to keep the farm ground. I can't buy 50% of part of a property, so we have to split the house off so I can own it all. When you drive by, there will be no visual change whatsoever. There'll be no more houses, no more cars, no more people. Just on the plat map, I'll be 100% owner. That's it.
Thanks, Ben.
You're straight to Johnson County. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the final plant for the Meadows 4B, 4B. We all have the maps in front of us. Mrs., anything changed since the preliminary?
No, nothing's really changed. These are all zoned R2, so there's 32 lots. It's just continuation of what we started. So this goes basically from Orange Street all the way up to Greenview area. It does include a new street called Prairie View Drive. It'll be brand new. That runs from Cedar Johnson Road back to the east. So that's probably the highlights.
So these will all be duplexes, you expect, or most of all?
Yes.
Do your commission members have any questions?
I'll just say, you can approve this tonight, but the council probably won't see it for October 5th, in theory. In theory, but there needs to be without streets and utilities in place, will probably require some sort of escrow agreement before council will approve it. Does that make sense?
Sure. So one street, I put it into there.
Yeah, sorry.
Progress.
That's my comment.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against the final plant? Any more comments from the members of the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plant.
Motion to approve the final plant.
Second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Okay, press your cut. That done. The next is, if I'm pronouncing it right, Lothran Ridge Estates Final Plant. And we have a, anyone who wishes to speak about this?
Hello, this is Mike Welch on the Zoom call with Acxiom Consultants and representing the owner on, on this project. And Matt Adam, a part of the ownership, is also on the Zoom call as well. So Lathan Ridge, you guys saw a while back, probably about the same time you saw the Meadows with the preliminary plat, we are now in the midst of utility construction and grading, well, grading is mostly done, in utility construction, similar to the project before this. It will probably come to council sometime in October, pending utility completion and, and paving. But we're feeling optimistic that we can get that done and with the weather we've had and forecast, that that seems possible. So if anyone has any specific questions, but it is all R2 zoning. The outlaw that is on there will be maintained by the homeowners association. Per the agreement, the developer's agreement, and.
Okay, do mission members have any questions? Ryan?
I just have one. I think the last time we saw this, there was some question about the connection to Greenview. Is there any update about what's going to happen there? I think at the time you thought you were going to stop at the intersection of Prairie View and Greenview Drive.
Correct. And, and where we're at now is it will be stubbed to the north. It still does not, the final connection is not, is not made at this time, but the pavement's brought close to the north property line.
I got maybe a little update to add to that. Currently, V and K has been working on behalf of the city to make that connection. There's two options that we're looking at currently. We're still working through the cost of those two options. We expect that they will be presented to council at the October 5th meeting. And I guess the difference between the two options is one, just making a, a, a connection from where the Lothran Ridge project ends off and, and connecting si- a sidewalk connection to the cul-de-sac, if you will. Then option two would be to go straight through, take out the cul-de-sac and connect to the other side, the northern side of the cul-de-sac with a straight road going straight through and still also having a sidewalk connection. So those two options will be presented to council at the October 5th meeting.
Do you have cost figures for the options?
We're still waiting for V and K to put those together.
Okay.
I have one other question for the developer as well. I don't know if this was described in our preliminary review, but I'm just curious about what Outlet A will look like when this is complete. Is that a stormwater area or is that like a park space or what that's supposed to be?
Uh, Outlet A is the stormwater basin for the project. It'll be a dry bottom basin, so it'll just be turf grass that's mowed. It's about four to five feet deep.
Who'll be responsible for that? City?
The association.
The association? Did you say that?
Yep. Okay, other questions by the commission members? This is a public meeting, right? So does anyone in the public have any comments, questions? Anything to add?
I'll just say, I support this final plant approval tonight. However, there is no developer's agreement yet with the city, which should be in the works. Maybe we'll redo that at our next council meeting, I'm not sure. But that'll have to be passed as before council approves the final plant, this final plant also. But that doesn't mean you, this body can't recommend approval to the council.
So we could have a proposal to recommend approval pending the provision of the developmental agreement for this subdivision. Okay, I'll, I'll move that. And do I have a second? Ryan, okay, very good. Um, let's have a voice vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? All right, thank you. Now, the next item on the agenda has to do with corner lots, something that we've spent a bit of time on in the past. And it seems to me we now finally have a appropriate definition and, and division of, or determination of what corner lots are, and a proposal to amend the zoning regulations with adding a piece on corner lots. Anyone to speak to that?
Well, it's, I wrote this. It's the same thing that we've been looking at for about three months.
Yeah.
We just need to get it on, on the agenda. And all it's doing is verifying a way to determine the rear yard on corner lots.
So does anyone see any problems with this particular amendment to the ordinance? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Yes.
The only comment I have is the next item will be just to formally approve what is written. It will go to city council on, on October 5th for their public hearing. It's already been published, and they'll do their public hearing and then the first reading of this ordinance.
Okay. Well then, I see no particular issue with this. It seems to be without error at this point. And so let's, let's just have a motion to approve this ordinance change. Ryan?
Second.
Right? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And then next is a draft ordinance 778, which is a bit different, but essentially the, the same, same issue about yard requirements. Want to tell us more about this?
Well, this, this is more or less going ahead and putting yard requirements in the I, I2 zoning.
Right, which we've, we've discussed a fair amount.
The only clarification was in the I-1 district, which said if you were in an I-2 district, you had to, had to have this much front yard, where there was nothing in the actual I-2 district that would clarify what that setback should be required to have. So all this is doing is clarifying what required setbacks are needed if you plan to build in that zone.
Is, is this the same setbacks as I-1 or is it?
Yeah.
Plus they've already been following.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what we have here is a mere clarification and making sure that our ordinance is essentially up to date and equivalent between different areas. Well, let me propose again that we approve this draft ordinance 778. And I'll have to have a second for that.
Sorry.
Very good, James. All those, Leslie?
Just a quick question. So tonight you're just reviewing it. You next, at the next meeting, we have to have our public hearing for you to officially approve it. So this is just for you to review. Is it written the way you want to see it so we can have our public hearing next meeting?
And.
So there's no changes. It'll come on the next agenda and you need to, the next, last agenda item is to set the date for that hearing.
Okay.
You get a variance, all right? Yeah, then you can still, like, variance for special exception, reduce the yard down.
And we see no problem with this, so.
So no changes.
No, no changes. All right, very good. Now, next is an interesting one about swimming pools, and we've talked about this a fair amount. So how do we come up with this ordinance?
Leslie and myself met on this and discussed it after the last P and Z meeting. And what this ordinance is doing is regulating actual swimming pools, setbacks in residential zones and non-residential zones. As you read through there, we're proposing a 10-foot side and rear setback. One foot of a pool, need to be 10-foot off the property lines. Swimming pools are not allowed in the, in the front yard, in front of the structure limits, unless you're 40-foot back from the front property line. And, and that is because in some older subdivisions and new subdivisions, someone might have their house set all the way back to the rear of the property. There's no room to put it in here. This gives them an option. You're not going to see that very often. It also regulates when a permit is required. If it's 24 inches deep, it's required to have a permit. Even though you put a pool in your yard, even if it doesn't require a permit, it's still required to meet the zoning regulations. That's something you need to keep in mind. Permit's triggered by your depth, 20 inches. So you can put a, put an 18-inch pool up, deep pool up, technically it can't be front yard.
How's that classified for eating ground? How's that classified for eating ground that, uh, that has to have a permit, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, you know, in, in the building code, it talks about in 105 hundred point two, permission required, it says, you know, water tanks, which is a pool of a certain gallon amount, which is a reasonable pool, actually.
So a question about administration. How is the city going to manage the permitting process?
Well, we'll report if, if they're going to go ahead and put a pool. Those people then fill out an application for building permit. It's, it's a building permit, it's not a pool. Building, it's a structure supported off the ground.
Well, there'll be cost to that.
Whatever Leslie said, it is.
We haven't got that far yet. First, we have to get that.
So, so just a question, like, I, I don't know, as a person that has a pool, but just took it down today, but the hot tubs, like, so you have to get a building permit for a hot tub and have a fence around it? Like, that seems ridiculous to me. Can you explain that, Terry? Like, what does that look like if I get a hot tub on my? On my patio? I have to have a fence around the patio and a latching gate?
The way it's written right now, yes. But, you know, there, it'd be quick with some language in here that would say if you had a locking cover.
I, I think, I mean, I think you're going to get a lot of pushback from.
Of course, the other thing you got to look at, Emily, it says in here, if your pool is less than four foot tall.
Yeah.
Required to have a fence.
Right.
Okay, but if it's, if the edge of your pool is more than four foot, you're not required to have a fence. Okay, because it doesn't do any good to put up a four-foot fence around that.
Yeah.
A pool that's 52 inches tall.
Right, right.
So.
So then what, so if you have, if you have a pool that's more than four feet, you don't need a fence?
No. I mean, my theory on that is if they can get over a four-foot fence, you know, or if they can. There's no reason to have a, a four-foot fence. If they can actually climb over it and get into your pool that's five foot tall.
Like, I guess, yeah, but I guess my point is, what's the point of the ordinance itself? Is it to protect?
It's a safety.
Citizens, it's a safety issue, right? So, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, if you're, if you've got a three-foot tall pool, or if you've got a four-foot tall, tall pool and you've got it a foot in the ground. You know, you're going to require you put a fence around it to prohibit somebody from going ahead and getting in your pool. I know you can't protect everybody from everything.
Right, right.
To deter it. But if you've got a, a 52-inch tall pool, there is no reason to put a four-foot fence.
So are these for permanent pools, permanent, or what about a pool they go over and buy at Walmart, one of them in Texas, blows up?
Yeah, we didn't address that.
Heard this, that requires a permit, if it's marten.
What would you consider a permit, I guess, my question, someone that puts it up in March and then takes it down and.
It's a lower pool, like an elephant slip pool, which is pretty popular. I don't feel like we should require any.
I don't either.
So maybe not your front yard. Dead set against regulating hot tubs.
Me too.
Any language to do with a hot tub.
So for example, like I, I personally, and I, I'll do whatever the city requires, but I personally had a. I don't even know, maybe it was three feet deep pool, probably, I don't even know what it was. But I set it up in May and I just took it down today. But I still have to pay for and pull a permit on that every year, or how does that work? If I take it up and put it down?
Just to clarify, this information was put out several months ago to, to, to create some discussion because we have had some.
No, I, yeah.
I know, I'm just, I'm going to clarify, so this is, this is a starting point. What we did was we got an ordinance, or actually was a policy from the city of Iowa City. These are their rules. Terry and I went through and kind of mushed up a few of them, increased some of those depths because I'm the same way. But we're trying to address a concern that now more in-ground pools are coming, are being built in West Coast. More above-ground pools are being in West Coast, should we wrap some rules around those? So again, this is just a starting point. This is not in final draft mode, it's just written for you guys to discuss what you do and don't want. Of course, council is going to have their opinion too, so it starts here.
Got it.
Ryan? If I may try and project, and I think I'm hearing from the rest of the commission, I think we are generally not as concerned about hot tubs. As we would be about swimming pools. It seemed like, I just did a quick search and it looked like some hot tubs may have like a three-foot height edge instead of four feet. I'm not sure that there's a, a much larger risk, because most of the time if a hot tub is in use, there's people in it. If somebody's not using it, there's going to be a lid on it of some kind. And it doesn't seem to present the same kind of hazardous in an open swimming pool. And then, and then as far as temporary pools go, I'm not sure that we need much there other than where they can and can't be placed. Like if someone puts a pool in their front yard, we certainly want to have something we can say, this shouldn't be here all summer. But do you need to pull a permit for a temporary pool? I don't see that as a practical application. And anybody else can feel free to chime in if I miss.
What would we define as a temporary?
Yeah.
Something with soft sides or hard sides?
I, I would say that it's something that goes up.
Less.
Somebody, something that goes up in, like the spring and comes down in the fall. Like, so, yeah, I guess it would be something that you can take up, that you would leave up. If something, if it was something you can take down when the quote-unquote season is over.
You'll leave it up through the winter, you need a permit.
They're just put it that way.
Yeah.
Because of, theoretically, if you buy a binard at Walmart, it's not going to survive the winter anyway. So they're going to have to take it down.
I mean, I get that, I totally, and I don't mean to rail on anybody, and I realize that I'm a little biased because. I myself had a seasonal pool for my kids, but I really think the intention of this, which is absolutely spot on. Is the reason, I remember the conversation, was the reason we were having these conversations because we had a lot of in-ground pools going in. And we didn't have any regulations regarding, and in-ground pools, in my opinion, are a little bit of a different deal, right? Like, a kid can walk across the yard and fall into a pool, not quite as the same thing as something that's three or four feet high, but whatever. I think the intention of the reason for this is, is absolutely spot on. Because we didn't and don't have any regulations regarding in-ground pools. And we're seeing more and more of those go in, and as our developments are increased, we're going to see more going on. But I think, I don't know, I, I don't think that the placement of a seasonal pool. I mean, you already kind of have a liability that should be with your insurance company and taking ladders in and out and doing all the things, but. Pulling, if, if I was a common citizen to pull a permit and have it be a building permit every time I set my pool up or take my, you, you know what I mean? I think that you, you're not going to find many people who are super excited about that. And from a safety issue, it's very different than in-ground, but.
Where are we going to, what's our position on temporary pools or collapsible pools that have decks and zero access to them?
So that's a different story, yeah, I would agree with.
I just wonder where we draw a line in kind of regulating that. I mean, I think anything with zero access or where you can walk in and fall into four-foot water, that should have a fence around it. But you could also see where there's going to be a fence, or I could see a deck being built off of the back of the house. And then having a, you know, collapsible pool put up against it. So you could theoretically walk off of your deck into the pool and have a zero. Now, maybe that's an old insurance issue. I just think it's a.
Well, I think, I think that's where the, the verbiage somebody said earlier about pools that are, that are seasonal in terms of they're set up. On a certain time and taken down before, I mean, that, that, that's not the type of pool that's going to have a duck around it, right? Like, you can't take down a pool that has a duck around it, those are more permanent. I, I would argue, I don't know what other people think, but.
Okay, let's hear some more, Ryan?
I'll just go back to again what I was saying before, and Emily, I think to your point. If a pool is temporary, I don't think the commission needs to have any interest in it other than where it can be placed. I don't think we need to have a permit for that pool. We just need to have a, some guidance about where you can put it. Because you certainly don't want it.
Right.
Getting crashed into by a car by the street or in somebody's garage, but you can put it in your yard at least 10 feet away from the property line. And if we have that language in the.
I think setbacks are reasonable on those for sure, and, and location.
Would we allow a pool on someone's front driveway? Say they have a steep backyard, you just can't set a pool up in the backyard. But they may want a pool in there. I've seen it happen on the front driveway, it's not in their yard, but it's on the driveway, the concrete.
It's been some kind of matter for the zoning board adjustment.
Yeah, as long as you have your parking spots, you, you don't want to force all your cars out on the street.
Well, you don't want to use the garage, I mean, they didn't use the garage for the summer, but.
They do that every year, don't they?
Yeah.
But if, I think, I think John, to speak to John's point, like if you're going to, I, I mean, I think there should be some regulation about. Location and whatever and setbacks and all the things. And if you're, if you have that special exception, which is really not a common thing. And your neighbors might have something to say about it, right? Because it's right in their front yard, depending on how the house is, I think that's a board of adjustment kind of issue. Not something built into the, to this, in my opinion.
So Leslie and Paul would put in something that says permanent means in place 12 months of the year, be appropriate? And that's what we're interested in. Not seasonal.
And so I put up a, a three-foot pool. That I can deflate in November. A three-foot pool, okay, three-foot deep, do I need to put a fence around? It's a portable pool or it's a temporary pool?
I say no.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I suppose I say no.
I still say no too, I still say absolutely not.
That's will be there after, people leave. Fence will be, it'll be like, let's say that's a rental house where the, where the pool goes up. And you make a renter put up a fence to put in the pool and then they move out next year. And the pool's in a different light, you'll just get a bunch of fences wherever that person moves to and you won't have. I mean, I got to think those temporary pools are going to be a insurance issue and just, you know.
Well then, why want to create an in-ground pool? I'm just throwing this out there, maybe I'm being a devil's advocate here.
Yeah.
Why, what's the difference if I put up a permanent pool, let's just go ahead and show it back on the insurance company. What is the difference?
It's a very different structure to, and, and a permanent versus temporary.
I, I'd go ahead and say if it's a permanent pool, when the people move out, the pool is going to stay. And the pool that stays should be protected, so the neighborhood kids, maybe. After that person moves out, the next person moves in, they're not familiar with pools. You know, some kid next door still can't come running in and get in that pool. For the new owner that's not familiar with pool safety, like maybe the person that put it up has a nice protection system for it everywhere. But this guy just leaves it open, so the fence is the backup. If it's a permanent pool, you got to have a fence. If it's a temporary pool. Then I don't want to get into regulating it.
I think a toddler who cannot swim can wander into the yard or an in-ground pool and get in that pool, but a toddler can't. Going to have a hard time climbing into a three-foot tall pool. If the toddler's three feet tall, he can get in that three foot, he could probably climb in the three-foot pool. But.
Also going to have a hard time.
Well, and quite.
The infant or the crawling baby isn't going to fall in that three-foot tall pool.
Right.
I don't see that as a, as a liability.
I, I think that our, the purpose of this conversation was with good intent for the in-ground pools. But, but the, what it's morphed into, I think is, in my opinion, is a little bit over-regulation.
It also seems to be a feeling that it's over-regulation to deal with hot tubs. Because they do indeed have covers and clearly somebody could leave a cover off. But nonetheless, they're less likely to be a hazard to children.
Theoretically, your hot tub's used in the winter. And, and when they're not in use, they have to have that cover on them to keep them from.
From the heat getting out, yeah.
And they're, and it's a bear cat to get the cover off usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, three-foot deep top hot tub isn't always, it's three-foot deep in the middle, the, the seats and the benches are maybe two foot.
It's easy to get out of a hot tub, it's not easy to get out of a pool for a toddler.
I'm not concerned about hot tubs at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm gathering is I'm going to strike everything that has says hot tub.
Yes.
No hot tubs. Going to define what a permanent pool is, and a permanent pool is something that's left up 12 months out of the year.
That's what I would call it.
And that would require a permit and fencing.
Yep.
Okay.
If it's under, if it's under four feet high, four feet high.
Sites are less than four feet.
It's less than four feet.
So what I already have, what we already have there is fine, okay. And then temporary pools will be, I'll describe those as well, there was, or was there taken down in the winter? But they must follow the setbacks and no permit is required.
Yep.
Taken down or just drained?
I say taken down.
Yeah.
Laying in the backyard blown away.
Because how are you going to regulate how much water's left in it? Like, I, I mean, I think that's too much of a gray area. I agree, Terry, I think it needs to come down, down.
Okay, so then what I plan on doing is rewriting it and just having another, have you look at it again at the next meeting? Until we have it all hashed out before we want to go to council.
That was good.
Okay, that's all great. My last question is, what about a four-foot tall pool? Are we going to want a four-foot fence around that four-foot tall pool?
No.
If he's got a four-foot sidewall, then no fence required because that.
Okay, a 42-inch sidewall.
Fence required.
That's got to have a four-foot fence around it.
That draws the line somewhere.
Well, why don't you drop it to 42 then?
I'd rather go 42.
Okay. I think you've got enough information now.
Yeah.
Good discussion.
Thank you for the feedback, there you go.
Thank you for bringing, I mean, thank you for bringing it for us to talk about, I appreciate it. I don't mean to like. Yeah, I really appreciate it.
So this board, this board will come to pass an ordinance then, we'll pass that on to council.
Right.
And we're going to have the same discussion.
Yep.
Thank you for handing out some things for us.
Okay, we need to set a date for the public hearing on the chapter amendment. And I would certainly imagine that can be our next meeting, which is going to be November 24th.
And that'll be for chapter 16534 on the I-2 area regulations only.
Okay, anything else? How about city staff reports? Your report from the mayor?
Um, there's been a little interest on a piece of property, highway, commercial, industrial. The faucet drive. If they want to move fast, we may, they may want to do a site plan. So a site plan review, which this board would have to review, and they probably won't want to wait till the November meeting. So.
Reservoir drive. Reservoir drive.
Faucet. Faucet drive.
Axiona area, Axiona area.
So if that happens, I'm going to ask you guys to meet on a special meeting.
We've been willing to do so, so keep us informed. Let Leslie, Leslie pass it along to us. Come in. Yes, please.
Regarding the building portion of it, I forget if we brought this to E and Z last month or. Last meeting regarding certificate of occupancies and how we regulate certificate of occupancies and, and temporary certificate of. Certificate of Occupancies. You know, and what escrows and what times that we can go ahead and issue temporary COs. Can we bring that?
Related to sod and sidewalks or related to what, Terry?
Relating to people occupying houses without certificate of occupancies. When we're able to go ahead and issue one in regards if they don't have their sod in or sidewalk.
Right, that's what I just asked, yeah, regarding side and sidewalk, yeah.
Well, maybe we can just sort of, just the two days. In on it.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I think we've already been burdened on that once, haven't we?
Yes, more than once.
Right, so definitely.
Was the, remind me, Terry, I think when we talked about this once, we discussed the possibility of like an escrow for.
Escrow schedule.
Escrow schedule for things that are complete, so say you don't finish them, we can go back and take that.
It's usually one, it's usually one and a half, I mean, one and a half times the amount, isn't it, Terry?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I think it's just a standard five thousand.
Yeah, five thousand bucks.
Oh, okay.
So what we did was again, we borrowed a policy from the city of Iowa City and we sat and reviewed it. It was internal staff, what we will and will not issue certificate of occupancies for because it's been happening and builders are wanting it. And this is happening too often, and it's becoming a nightmare for tracking.
Right.
Making sure things are getting done and, you know, re-inspections and all that stuff. So we sat down, dropped, we, we copied the letter, we tweaked it a little bit to our specifications that does address single-family homes, multi-family homes and. Yeah, I guess it's multi-family homes, basically.
Comments?
Terry is the one signing the letter along with Redmond. It does say that our policy is subject to review because again, it's a policy that we're trying to move forward using. I do have one new tweak to it, so I might have to have you sign it again. But anyway, it's, it's to eliminate some of that and we're giving very specific times of when we would do it, when we would issue a certificate of occupancy and that's due to adverse weather or I think it's adverse weather.
That's it.
Basically, after, yeah, after October 15th through through April 15th, for the only time we would give them, only because they wouldn't be able to maybe get their driveway in, but everything else should be able to be done.
Well, and here's the deal, guys, like that, they know that on every other place, Terry, you know this, they know that wherever else they go, like I don't want them to think of us as being any different or having any other expectations of any, or you guys having to play, like it's not fair for them to come and wind you when you just cite the policy and they know, they know better. So as long as we don't set ourselves up as the, the town that you can try to get away with that kind of stuff, they know better. So it's not fair for you, Leslie, or anybody in the city office to have to
This letter will go out.
Play that game.
This letter will go out to all the developers after I get one more signature. One more final, final signature and then it will go out with every building permit going forward so that, or any new developer that comes in will get a copy of this letter so that they are informed upfront.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
It'll be a policy, not an ordinance.
That's correct.
Just a policy.
And another thing that, that Leslie, Leslie and myself have noticed on some of these lots, when they come in to go ahead and build a zero lot line, single-family dwelling, we've been starting to require them to provide us an actual lot split. A couple of them that we've done, we haven't received recorded lot splits. So that's something that we're trying to go ahead and get upfront.
We did have one request and they said, you know, they weren't able to get it done ahead of time, but I have confirmation from the engineer saying that they're working on it. So it's just one of those, I'll keep in the file, but I have to have time to track anything else, but I will. I mean, otherwise it could be several months before they could get it done or even weeks. And we don't want to hold them up for that, but it is something that is another item on the checklist to make sure that they know they need to do it before.
Well, and, and we're, we're approving a lot more R2s, right? So that's a thing. So that needs to be a thing.
We're getting good practice.
Yep.
Growing community and
That's awesome.
You know, a few growing pains that we just need to get, you know, figured out and it's, it's a good thing, so.
Agreed.
Okay, does that do it?
Yes, sir.
Very fine. I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn until our next regular meeting, November 24th, or if we have to have a special meeting before that. Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.